Good evening and welcome to Athens City Council. It's September 11, 2017 at 7:00 PM. And tonight we'll be having a series of committee meetings, our first one of which will be the Committee of the Whole. Before we begin on these committee meetings, I would like to announce that our government channel has offered some hearing assistance devices which we now have available. So if anybody would like to use that tonight, they can come to the control room. These are the kind of devices also that you can use your own earbuds with, or they will sync with hearing aids. We try and speak loudly, but we don't often do a good enough job at it. So this will be a real improvement, I think, to being able to hear the meetings well here in the hall. Tonight, we're having a Committee of the Whole, and the first item of this is the city financial implications of the Athens City School District building changes. I do know and would like to thank the fact that the Facilities Steering Committee, the Athens City School Superintendent, have been discussing this for some time, as have the school board members in a series of meetings. What's come to the attention of some of the city council members is that citizens are concerned about the issue. And while we don't, at this point, have a firm definition of the way in which city would play a role in it, we did think that this was an appropriate opportunity for council members to at least talk about what some of those financial implications might be, and then to also open that up for comment from members of the audience who might be here tonight. What we'll do first is lead off with Councilmember Pappy, and then any other city council members who might want to make comment. Mayor Patterson from the administration, if you would like to make any comments. And then we will open it up to audience members, if you would like to come to speak. If you do, we just ask that you come up to the podium and sign in and announce your name for us, so that we have that for the records and also for those people who are viewing the meeting tonight. And I set a timer for three minutes for each person. And it starts with a green light and moves to yellow and red, and then an ugly little beep, but we very rarely get to that portion because people are usually pretty good to keep into their three-minute time limits. So we'll begin with Councilmember Pappy.
Thank you, President Isley. I wanted to begin by, in our conversations to put this on the agenda, we discussed the fact that council is a financial body for the city of Athens. And our conversations need to reflect our concerns from a financial aspect. So I just wanted to start out with that, that that's kind of a clarification. I've also prepared a statement because I don't want to get off-focus, and I want to stay on task. So I went ahead. So I'm going to read my statement at this point. "I can't think of a more emotional community issue than the education of our children other than maybe raising taxes. It seems that this issue with the schools covers both." I'd also throw the roundabouts in there, but that's more of a joke. "For the past 15 months," as all of you know, "the school district has been in conversation and planning regarding their facilities and programming. As a city council member, I've sat back and listened and followed the conversation mostly from afar. I did attend one meeting last fall that was held at the high school. Recently, I became more interested when I started reading in the newspaper about a land donation from Ohio University. I'm somewhat familiar with the land being discussed because I was also co-chair of the Affordable Housing Committee, where we looked at different sites that might be developable in the city of Athens. In the past few months, more constituents have been discussing their concerns with me regarding the elementary school campus model. There is anxiety and concern with citizens and business owners. I believe that having this conversation at council is another avenue for our city voters to share their thoughts because they are taxed both for city infrastructure and the Athens City School District. We have no hard figures for tonight, as Member President Isley mentioned, because there really is no plan established, though part of the anxiety arises when the press is following closely, as they should, the activities of the superintendent and the school board. Obviously, as a council member, I am concerned with the impacts of any option. I believe that there are significant financial implications for all of the plans under discussion. For the past six years on council, I've tried to promote thoughtful and progressive development. This discussion tonight is paramount for Athens' future. As Chair of the Transportation Committee, I understand the implications and financial aspects of infrastructure. I have many questions related to the cost of infrastructure, including safe travel at the site of an elementary school campus on the proposed land, as well as other issues like runoff erosion, sewer, and water expansion to the site. I know there will be no answers this evening, but these issues will certainly have to be addressed in time. Another question regards the impact on housing in our current elementary school neighborhoods and conversations regarding trading buildings for infrastructure. In the past few years, Athens City has been noted on several national lists for being an exemplary community. There's a long history of democratic process and discourse here, and a committed, caring, active citizenry. In that vein, as other communities have moved forward with difficult planning issues, as for example Lancaster and their schools, I wondered if they use their planning commission or comprehensive planning process. This Athens City School District decision will affect the city's economic development, real estate, job recruiting, and overall quality of life, in my opinion. Maintaining an open, transparent conversation is what Athenians expect and deserve. In the end, they are our partners, neighbors, and taxpayers." So in that statement, I think I pretty much laid out what my questions are in terms of what my concerns are, and I would open it up for other council members.
Thank you. I'm going to approach this from a slightly different, though not too different, viewpoint. The fact that so many people in the community have questions and have no answers points to a problem that is part of the planning process that this decision has been undergoing for the last 15 months. Community schools are part of the community. When you talk about moving, changing, it's very much impacts more than just the students that are in the school or the parents that are in the school. It's a community issue. I think that the planning process that I've seen with this issue is very compartmentalized and siloed because they're not necessarily looking at impacts with our infrastructure, which we have spent money, grants, and time developing for individual schools. There's no questions or communication with members of council. I've never been approached as the Planning and Development Committee Chair about these issues. We are going to commence on a comprehensive plan process, which is super, super exciting for us planning wackos. But it's stymied. Our processes are already stymied because we don't know, and we haven't been included in the discussion about the school issue. And that impacts every single neighborhood that we have. We're already behind the eight ball in comprehensive planning because the process hasn't been transparent and has not reached out to all the stakeholders that are beyond the students. I can understand, looking at the students, the school board has their things that they have to do. But to not look at the whole gestalt of the process is, I think, selling our very inclusive and very dynamic community short and does a disservice to a lot of people who care about the schools, they care about our neighborhoods, and they want a process that's fair, inclusive, and transparent. And I just, from a planning point of view, I don't think that the school board has done those sort of homework points.
Do we have others, council members who'd like to speak? Yes, Councilmember Smedley.
President Isley, I appreciate the opportunity to have this conversation. You know, the schools are really very important. I do hope that we keep the focus on what it is we have the authority over, and that is, you know, understanding the financial implications that it would have on our budget. The way I understand it, you know, we don't, I don't know that we have a representative from the school board here tonight to answer some of these questions, but I am of the understanding that there has not been a decision made on what direction to go in just yet. And so maybe the administration can loop us in if they're already involved in some of these conversations, or if it's even time to loop the city council into some of these plans. Because I certainly wouldn't want to talk about these things prematurely either. But I understand the perspective that has been brought up. You know, we do want to be mindful and prepare for all scenarios, if we can. And the way I understand it, attempts were made to bring some financial figures tonight, but we just are not able to do that right now. There's just too many variables, too much, we don't know. That's the way I understand it. Certainly correct me if I'm wrong. So those are my comments at this time.
Councilmember McGee.
Thank you. I feel like I'm watching or waiting for the end season of Game of Thrones. I'm really anxious to figure out who's going to be on top when the last season comes out, or the last show comes out. I would like to know what the administration is doing in regards to any kind of negotiations with a university for land transfers. That's what I would like to know. My understanding is that with the rumors being heard around town that there are all sorts of things being discussed, but city council apparently is not hearing those things. So I would like to know if the administration is in fact negotiating anything in regards to property for future school sites, which I really think would be premature. Thank you.
Councilmember Butler.
Thank you. I appreciate the comments from my colleagues and welcome the dialogue this evening. And I think that's the biggest thing that's necessary or a part of this. Because as I was knocking on doors and meeting with Westsiders, getting papers signed for running for office, this issue came up almost every door in house that I visited. And it is of paramount importance. I think Councilmember Pappy summed it up quite eloquently in her written statement. Something that impressed me during the Obama administration was transparency. I think the Obama administration worked quite diligently at communicating openly. And many of us in the community feel a bit lost with the federal government's lack of transparency and/or lack of true leadership. And so feeling a little helpless in our small-town community of Athens is a little heartbreaking because I think this is an issue that has grave implications for many generations to come. So my hope is for us to begin that dialogue this evening with transparency. And I'm encouraging both the school district, the city, the university to continue to have dialogue. The university is held to an extremely high standard. They spent thousands of dollars with consultants looking at six- and 10-year master plans and communicated with many entities quite clearly about where they're hoping to go. And I am encouraging the school district, as well as the city and the university, to continue that type of openness as we move forward. Thank you.
Councilmember Katsas.
Thank you. I'm not ready to be an alarmist yet. You know, really, I believe that everybody is still working towards what they want to propose and bring forward. We're probably not ready yet, because they're not ready yet. So I'm okay with waiting. I know that I have been able to contact Superintendent Gibbs, and he sat down and spent time with me, and I've reached out to other groups, and we've had a lot of discussion and conversation about this. So I do believe that a lot of that is happening. It's happening at pickup, it's happening, you know, at many times during the day. And I think there are groups out there that everybody needs to come forward and really work to find a compromise, because I think that's what we're going to end up with, and it's going to be something that everybody is going to have to be okay with meeting in the middle somewhere. And we also have to really think about the whole idea that the Athens City School District is not just the Athens City School District. So this is something that's even larger than the city, and I really want to make sure that everyone is included in that process. So, thank you.
Councilmember Reisner.
I guess I'm the last one to speak on it. Thank you, Madam President. One question in my mind is, is the end result of our discussions tonight a forthcoming resolution from next Monday? Is that part of the purpose of this? And if so, what would it look like?
I think...
Councilmember Fall, did you have a comment to make?
Oh, I think one of the issues was that there were several questions brought last week about infrastructure development for this mythical piece of property. And I think that that kind of caught some of council members by surprise because that seems really far along the process. And so I think that the idea, correct me if I'm wrong, to just, to identify and talk about some of the issues from a council perspective about the rumors that are out there, and also to let our voice be known about as one of the major stakeholders in this whole process, that maybe we need more information and a more transparent process.
I would agree with that statement, that that is what the resolution would look like from council.
So it'd be a list of questions to be answered, as opposed to a definitive statement of council's determination of any particular direction?
I think one of the frustrations that I get from talking with council members and public is that the process so far, I mean, for a 15-month process to not include larger amounts of stakeholders in just meetings or identifying issues is a, for me personally, from a planning professional perspective, that's troubling. And so we need to, before anything gets put out more forward, what I think basically we're saying is we need to be included in a lot of the discussion. Because we also represent people who are not necessarily represented by the parents' organization and the students. We're the community. And a lot of people, even though they may not have students or be in pickup or talk to Dr. Gibbs after a school event, this affects every single person in the community and the economics of the community.
I would just add that as council, we are a microcosm of the diverse citizenry that we represent. And if we're not totally, if we're not understanding or clear or hearing these rumors as well, that's not healthy. And so that's what I would say, as our community, that's not a healthy spot to be in. And we want to be more a part of that. So I would see this resolution making some statement in that direction.
Any other council member comments before we move on to the administration? Councilmember Smedley.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Just one other comment. I just would say that I would not say that I fall into the camp of being someone who feels that it's not forthcoming enough. So that's just, I just want to make sure that's clear, that there are diverse opinions on this council, on where everyone stands in terms of where the, how the planning process is going.
Councilmember Katsas.
And I would also second that same thought. I'm in a good spot on this.
Okay. Mayor Patterson.
Thank you. Let me start by answering the only question that I truly heard, and that was from Member McGee. And no, there are no negotiations on the city side for land transfers to anybody when it revolves around, you know, PK through 12. That has not happened, and is, you know, at this point in time is not happening. And if it ever were to, council would certainly be involved, because I can't just willy-nilly relinquish land in the city of Athens. But that's not, at this point in time, that conversation has never, you know, been put to test where we're sitting there going, where can they have? I can say that the superintendent for the school district has been turning over every stone, I think, possible in terms of what this whole process, where schools could be, what schools could be retrofitted. You know, I can honestly tell you, I would not want to be a school superintendent in a situation like this. Just being forthcoming about that, this is very difficult. I can also tell you in my conversations with the school superintendent that this is very difficult on his behalf as well. So I'm not going to speak for him. I can just tell you conversations that I have had with him in the decision-making process. I know that council is aware of this, and I'm sharing this with those of you who are here today, as well as anyone who might be watching tonight. I was one of the 20 members, 16 to 20 members, I can't remember what the number was, on the steering committee. So I was involved early on in that 15-month process. I can also tell council, and this is, I've said this to council in the past, in early on in the process, listening to what was going on and hearing the whole notion of consolidation of the schools, which at that time caused my hair to stand on end because there was only one conceivable place at that point in time to where the schools could be consolidated, and that was not in the city of Athens. It's called the Athens City School District for a reason. And so I worked very hard to kind of steer things back on track, because as a city administrator, and I know council members, you're likely to feel the same way. When I'm looking at the city growth, economic development, quality of life, and making, keeping Athens what Athens is, it was infathomable to me to sit and think, what would the city of Athens look like with no schools in the city of Athens? I conveyed that to the steering committee, and they heard it loud and clear. And so a lot of the dialogue, even though, trust me, that dialogue during that year-long process, well, really, eight-month process, went back and forth and all over the place. That said, I have had several conversations with the school superintendent, and to constantly keep council or anybody else, that matter, informed, it was like watching a ping-pong ball bouncing around inside an empty room. It was just, the ideas kept changing, and for a sundry of reasons, I'm sure, where, you know, the school board having to make hard decisions back and forth, but they're a quasi-governmental entity, and they are doing their own thing. I was speaking again through the lens of the city of Athens and advocating hard for the city of Athens. I'll also share with you, you know, recently, and I know that Member Fall is aware because she was involved in the email string, to where we were looking at, you know, who should be on the comprehensive planning committee as we start getting things rolling, the initial one, and we're looking to see what might be missing. And one of the things that jumped out at me, and this was conveyed a little bit, just a little bit ago, and that is, we should have a Athens City Schools element within the comprehensive plan as we're looking forward. You know, how do we see our school, the schools in the city of Athens? And so city planner Paul Logue took that on, and I'm sure that that's going to become either a subgroup, or it's going to certainly be part of the comprehensive plan, is how we envision the schools in the city moving forward. You know, that's, that is basically what I wanted to say and get that out there again. Again, I have mentioned this on camera several times, the council, kind of reporting out the steering committee and what kinds of things were going on, but also knowing that the, again, the city of Athens to have the schools migrate out, and what I've been told from the school superintendent, that that is not the plan at this point in time. In particular, one of the things I'd like to share that I was very adamant about as well is talking about the middle school and what could happen with the middle school. And what I've been assured, at least at this point in time, is the middle school will remain the middle school and will remain its current structure. One of the other things that I pushed hard for with the, on the steering committee with these dialogues, because there were several different models, which I think council is aware of, because you read about it in the press, as did everyone else, in terms of, does it become a single campus? Does it become a PK through five, a single campus with a middle school, with a high school? Or does it become multiple PK through fives or sixes, whatever, with the middle school component and the high school component? And I will tell you that the one, the only option that I ever fought for on the steering committee was option three that I just mentioned. And to me, the caveat was a minimum of two. If you're going to push, you know, if it's a financial thing that you're sitting there trying to figure this thing out. For me, you know, even that was a hard pill to listen to, or a hard pill to swallow when I'm listening to all the other dialogue that was going on from the other steering committee members. The options, as council is aware, the three options that came forward from the steering committee, you know, I even had to fight for that because at different points during the dialogue, the idea was, well, should it be a single option, to which I wasn't going to vote on a single option. That was a non-starter for me. You know, I said at a minimum, there should be, you know, we're discussing three options, those three options should go forward to the school board. And that's where they basically landed with the steering committee, is that all three options moved forward. But the steering committee, as well as the school board, knew what my option was in that case. So that's a lot, but that's, you know, my take and my viewpoint on the whole Athens City School District planning and moving forward.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Do we have members in the audience who may want to speak tonight? And we're focusing it tonight on the financial discussion. Is there anyone? Yes. Come on up to the podium. And we just ask that you sign in and then also announce your name for us. And if you could also tell us, this is my forgetting, if you represent a particular group, or if you're here as an individual citizen, that will help us also.
I am here as an individual citizen. I have lived in Athens for a lot of my life. I grew up here. I grew up on the east side. I went to East Elementary School. I currently own property that is in the East Elementary School District. I am representing myself. I do not have children, so you might think, well, I don't have a horse in this race. But I'm a citizen of this community, and I believe that it is the community, it is a community issue, that we all live with the results of our educational system, whether it's good or whether it's bad. it's good or whether it's bad. I first became aware of this because of the signs around town. And my initial reaction was, oh, you can't get rid of East? I have a great emotional attachment to that. I grew up three blocks away from East Elementary School. Then I started asking questions, and then I started going to board meetings. So I have to say frankly, I'm a little bit flabbergasted that people are saying they have questions and they don't understand. I've been to four of the last five school board meetings, and I've taken the time to go online and look at the school board's presentation, and I seem to have a pretty good idea of what's going on and where they stand and where they are in the process and what they're doing. And so I find it a little confusing why members of city council, if you have questions, haven't gone to the school board meetings. They're all completely open to the public. That's how I, you know, I'm not anybody other than someone who is concerned as a citizen about the quality of the education for our students first and foremost. And also, quite frankly, I don't want to pay more, more property taxes. I mean, I'm drowning under taxes as it is. But my first concern is with the quality of education and what creates the fairest, most equitable education for our students. And I think that that's what everyone should focus on first. And then once you come up with the plans, which the steering committee did, three plans that look at that, then you start to narrow them down and you start to look at the financial implications, et cetera. But first, foremost, and always, it should be about what is good for our students. I am the aunt of a special needs student, and I will tell you that the current situation as it is does not serve special needs students well. Not at all. My niece went to East Elementary School and then had to be transferred to Beacon and is not doing well at Beacon because they're not really equipped to handle her. She gets 15 minutes a week, if she's lucky, of occupational therapy. 15 minutes a week. If you combine campuses, that's going to help. So I just want you to think about what's fair, what's equitable, what is good education, and then about the finances. First things first.
Welcome, and if you could sign in, same, same procedure.
Thanks.
Announce your name, and if you represent a group.
So thank you for giving me a chance to speak. I'm Jason Heinrich. I am here speaking on my own behalf as a resident and as a parent of kids in schools. You know, I've, I've kind of been going around town for a few months, you may know this, promoting the idea that we should have a single K through five campus. And for the most part, I've been promoting that idea based on the idea that low-income children do better when they are integrated in a school that is, I should, integrated by socioeconomic status, and because it improves access to disability services for children with disabilities. I will acknowledge I was a little surprised to discover that city council was going to take up this issue tonight, and I understand it's been brought up in the context of questions about financial issues, although I understand it's very easy for us to move from financial issues on this. I do hope, and I, and I hope I can be perceived as doing this politely, I do want to take council to task because, you know, when I, when I hear council talking about, there are these questions, there are these mysteries, there are all of these unknowns, and we can't find out the answers. You know, the steering committee met over about a seven-month period. They had at least 11 public meetings. Anybody could have showed up at the meetings, that they were publicized in advance, anybody could have been there, you could have been there, I could have been there, anybody in this room, okay? The discussions took place. In fact, now, all of the minutes from those meetings are on the Athens City School District website. So if you want, after this meeting, you can go home or get on your phone and start looking through those minutes, and within about an hour, you'll have a pretty good idea of what went on at the steering committee. Okay, since that time, the Athens City School District School Board has continued to take more public input and deliberate more about these issues. And again, those meetings have been open to the public and publicized in advance, and developments have been posted, as those have gone along, on the Athens City School District website. So there are, for example, the final report and recommendations from the steering committee and the data they used to get there, that's all on the website. The different public input that has come from groups supporting the single campus and groups opposed to the single campus, those have all been placed on the Athens City School District website. You know, throughout this process, as I've wanted to learn more about it, I've contacted school, school board members on multiple occasions. I don't think I've ever waited more than 24 hours for a returned email from a school board member. I think Dr. Gibbs once took two days to respond to my email, but they have been very responsive to me and my questions. Thank you. Check out their website.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Hi.
Longtime resident here in Athens. Also, I'm a small business owner that supports the Small Elementary School Initiative. There's a very interesting group entitled the Institute for Local Self-Reliance. I'm going to just read an excerpt from a 2012 article that they had. "Small schools also build strong communities. Parents and neighbors are more likely to be actively involved in the school. The students benefit from community support, and the school in turn fosters connections among neighbors and encourages civic participation." And on down, it states that state and local policies often favor the construction of new sprawling schools on the outskirts of town over renovating smaller, more centrally-located schools. Examples of these policies include minimum acreage requirements, state funding programs that support new construction, and limit funding for renovation and inflexible building cones, codes, excuse me, designed for modern construction methods. We have the ability to solve all the issues brought upon us today by the public speaking within our small community setting. The socioeconomic integration, we can solve. The disabilities issue, we can help tremendously, tremendously. There are viable concepts that have been introduced by the school board member, Kim Goldsberry, and there are also viable concepts proposed by the Athens Community Schools In regards to the west side, I have a lot of concerns. The school's the only anchor. There is no community center, there's no pool, there's no library. The closure of West Elementary, in my mind, would be catastrophic. It would turn those houses into substandard dwellings, only inhabited by college students, and greatly lessening that specific community's value. I encourage our city council and mayor to promote our small community schools and the communities surrounding them, the small, finite communities. And I would also strongly encourage our mayor to openly convey all future communications on this topic in forums like this, and to make sure that we are well aware of the conversations occurring. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. My name is Amber Duff. I've lived here for about 33 of my 43 years in Athens, on the outskirts, not in the center of town where it's easy to organize and to get together and to make friends with people on council. Just one moment, please, so I can prepare a speech. "In the absence of a concrete proposal from the city school district, we should therefore consider the implications of all three options of the steering committees presented to the Athens City School Board of Education. For option one, the single campus, while it is not certain that the campus with multiple elementary schools on site will fall on the ridges and Ohio University offered for free, I'm sorry, on the ridges land, Ohio University offered for free new roads to be required for option one. The single campus option has advantages by bringing more city school jobs to the city. For option two, the grade schools, and the option three, the 2K, 5 schools, these will involve changing traffic patterns for the areas surrounding the schools. Streets nearby in the neighborhoods will expect at least double the amount of car and bus traffic. The current school configuration unfortunately is not sustainable with projected decreasing enrollment and state funding cuts. Dr. Gibbs has mentioned in the East Elementary Information Meeting on January 19th that in order to keep the status quo, we are looking to require a significant tax increase just to keep everything the same without updating the buildings. The city school also has another three challenges: aging buildings, we are qualified for state subsidy for new facilities as the maintenance cost for our buildings exceed more than two-thirds the cost of the building of new ones. We qualify as a hyper-segregated school district with one school with free and reduced lunch at around 20% and one school at around 80%. The system of economic segregation has a negative effect on our students, our town-gown relationships. Our school district does not provide adequate special service, special education services for people. The idea that we can at a reasonable cost is ridiculous, and I am so tired of hearing that we can all put, we can just put services in each building. Well, if you can tell us how you can afford that and how it's fair to special education people, and how you're not using your neighborhood as ties, as ways to move forward with your own needs to keep your own real estate costs up, then I would love to hear it. I was going to come up here, I was going to be peaceful, I was going to be quiet, I was going to read my prepared statement. But this is ridiculous. You cannot use your power over the people who really need it. It's a transparent process. We don't have a meeting and ask the school superintendent not to come. We don't have a meeting and hide behind our positions. I was going to be, I wasn't going to be angry, I wasn't going to be mad, but I am. This is the town I grew up in, and I am tired of seeing people manipulate it for their own advantage. Thank you."
Is there anybody else who'd like to make any comments tonight? If you could make sure and sign in and your name, and if you represent a group.
My name is Yiteng Wang, and I have been an Athens City resident since 2004. At first, I have a prepared speech, but I think I'm just going to focus on two points. One is what I had presented in the school board meeting in July 28, that I think our two groups have different thinking because we have, based on two different types of thinking. One is thinking within the schools, how to structure a good school's education system, and the other is about neighborhoods. And of course, in the context of this, of the city council, as all the elected council persons are represented neighborhoods and wards, and you tend to think in terms of neighborhoods. But I think the city, the city school, they tend to think about, how do I make the elementary school, middle school, and the high school inside, what's inside the school during the school day, about the curriculum, about teacher training, about what we need inside the school to improve the performance of the students? And while we, our education quality improves, that means a lot to this town, and we could improve the manpower and improve the quality of the citizenry. So I just want to say that when we're looking at the two groups' argument, we need to think about, one is based on just looking at the education system, and one is just thinking about what's outside the school in terms of neighborhood. And when you think about neighborhood, you tend to come from the city planning process. But this, just according to American Planning Association, there is a problem because neighborhood could change. And also, also, when you think, like, okay, I draw this neighborhood and then I put the school in the center, there's also the possibility of using exclusive zoning to, to keep things out, and that is not fair. And this is a critique of the American Planning Association itself in terms of, in terms of city planning. So that's why I feel, you know, like, while the school district is thinking, how should we improve the whole education quality inside the school, but in the meantime, we have all these things about what's outside the school? Yeah, outside the school is important, but it's not the only thing. We really need to give the school district the room. There are a lot of planning going on about curriculum, about professional development of the teacher, and these are the things that really work day-to-day to improve the education quality of the school district. And another thing I want to say is that I think in one of, people want to talk about the implications of the neighborhoods, but there seems to be that we are a creative community, but we always think about, there's, could only be negative implications. How about there might be positive implications? And positive implications for a whole neighborhood, for the whole town, and also for a specific neighborhood? That it's possible that when the lot is vacant, that it becomes a new attraction, it brings new opportunity and new development, and create needs that really fulfill that neighborhood's need. That neighborhoods right now has a parking issue, and also kids have no place to go. So there are a lot of ways, if we think creatively and not think connectively, that it could be an opportunity. Challenges are opportunities. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak tonight about the issue? Okay. Well, I thank all of you for taking the time to come here tonight to express opinions and to let us know your thoughts about this. And council will deliberate, I'm sure, with caution and, but also with the concerns of the, of the community at large as they, as they proceed. So thank you very much. We're going to move on to some other committee items. We have one other committee item tonight that's for the committee of the whole, and these are the rules of council by which council members operate. And our clerk of council and law director realized that one of our rules of council, rule number five, does not allow, at this point explicitly state, allowing the president pro tem to vote when they are serving on the council. So one of the items that we'll be bringing forward is an amendment to those rules of council, and they can be amended at any time. And so what we'll be doing is putting the language in to correct rule five so that we're in sync with the practice that we've been doing for years, which is allow, to allow the president pro tem to vote. And this is in accordance with Robert's Rules of Order, so we'll be proceeding with that. And that's the last item for committee of the whole.
I have a question, but?
Yes.
This will be brought up on Monday?
Correct.
Are we going to do suspend? This will be done by ordinance? Is that correct?
It'd probably be just a motion.
A motion?
Okay, it's a motion rather than an amendment to an ordinance.
Okay.
It'll just be a motion to amend the rules.
And they'll be effective immediately?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Good question. Any other comments or questions on that before we move on? Okay. The next committee is the Finance and Personnel Committee, and this is chaired by Council Member Reisner.
Thank you, Madam President. We've got a few items. The first item on, we have is reducing end-of-year appropriations. This is something that we usually do by ordinance. It's not unusual, and I think you'll find on your, in your files on your, on your drive, an old copy of an ordinance like that. This was done in 2007, but essentially, I would say the auditors hereby authorized to reduce the appropriations where anticipated receipts are not adequate and when combined with the carry-forward balance, not sufficient to approve the full appropriation of the The administration, I believe, has no comments or objections to this. As we've talked about, this is just something, it's something that we need to do because we're getting near the end of the year or in our budget, and there'll be some monies that... with the carry forward balance, not sufficient to approve the full appropriation of the The administration, I believe, has no comments or objections to this. As we've talked about, this is just something, it's something that we need to do because we're getting near the end of the year or in our budget. And there'll be some monies that, some lines will have more monies than necessary than others will not, and this will be a way to make sure that everything balances out. So, not an unusual thing to do. Any comments from Mayor?
No, you summed it up well. This is something that we do annually.
Yeah.
And just historically, the council members have documents in there, and what started this was a management letter from our state audit back in 2006, and it's a recommendation that comes through Ohio Revised Code that you reduce the appropriations. So we're just, we're following accepted financial and auditing standards.
Yeah, the bean counters are, are counting, so.
Okay.
That's what we do. So we'll bring that forward on Monday, I believe.
Okay.
And then next item, we have one year notes for pumper truck rollover and ladder truck payoff, community center energy project. Essentially, the auditor has recommended, and she should be in a position to know that the pumper truck note is due the, on October 20th, and Mondays for these payments has already been appropriated, and auditor's recommendation is to pay off the note on the community center energy project and the ladder truck. The monies are already there, then there's no reason not to, and that's another debt we can eliminate and get that off our books, and it makes our bond rating a little, little better, so, which is always good when you need to borrow money from somebody. So we'll be bringing that forward. And then last but not least, we have appropriations and transfers. I believe there's a $30,000 transfer from police training, is that? But I don't, I don't believe we're taking it out of that line now, is that correct?
We're asking for a new appropriation.
A new appropriations, yes, okay.
Right, so there's that, and there's also, we received a grant, a $15,000 grant from Bureau of Workman's Comp, and that grant is for a CO2 exhaust system for the pumper trucks that sit in Station Two. This is desperately needed, and this fits in line with, with Bureau of Workman's Comp because it's, it's a health safety item.
So this evacuates CO2, is that correct?
Correct. The system itself is...
Are we talking CO2 or carbon monoxide?
Carbon oxide.
Carbon oxide, okay. All right.
As opposed to just regularly expelled CO2.
Well, one's more dangerous than the other, so.
Significantly.
Yeah.
Thank you, Member Reisner. The, the cost for this system is $28,283.15.
Fifteen cents will be heard.
Right, so with this grant, it brings it down to $13,283.15. So we will need $15,000 appropriation for the fire department as well.
Okay. Questions?
Is this equipment in the other houses?
You know, in the other station headquarters?
Yeah, station.
I don't believe that it is. We did get a price quote on what that would cost to do Station Two, and Member Pappy, I'm going off the top of my head, but I believe that that was more at the $80,000 plus level. So Station Two, not because it was less expensive, but that was kind of what we were looking at and what, what Chief Reimer was looking at. He's looking at both, but with this Bureau of Workman's Comp, Workman's Comp being $15,000, it seemed like this was the best one to start with, and then we're going to start planning for a system, a larger system for headquarters.
I know if I was a firefighter, I'm thinking, maybe I need to transfer to the other building. But obviously, you are looking at that in a planning process and...
Well, Station One's a larger building anyway.
It is, and it's set up differently in terms of the beds and what have you, and Station Two being...
It's much smaller.
Small.
Yeah.
That the need was greater and identified as greater for Station Two.
So I appreciate that planning process.
Okay.
Is there any other items that we need to be aware of for Monday? I mean, I didn't know about this grant coming through so quick, so.
No, this is something that, that came up recently, and so...
I remember Chief Reimer talking about it about two months ago, I think. I think we were just in the hall, we were just, it mentioned that it may be coming, but I didn't realize it's so, so quick. Grants usually take longer.
It was a quick turnaround.
It was a quick turnaround, and it's an annual, it's really interesting things that I've learned by going up to Marietta to the annual Workman's Comp. There's an award ceremony for cities that do well in the Workman's Comp arena, and there are a number of, of grant mechanisms under, but BWC, when it comes to equipment, equipment purchases that could make the job safer, and this was one of those.
I'm just looking here at the, for wastewater treatment plan improvement rollovers, and wastewater treatment improvement design rollover for paying off the notes. Is that also in there for Monday?
Correct.
Okay.
We're assuming that the auditor would like to just pay the other based on the debt schedule.
Just debt schedule.
Okay.
And you should have a copy of the debt schedule.
Yeah, I think we all have one on our, our drive.
And Member Reisner, to go back real quick to what you were talking about with the trucks, the fire equipment, in particular, the pumper truck and the ladder truck.
Right.
For the pumper truck, it would be essentially rolling it over.
Right.
Whereas for the ladder truck, it's paying it off.
Or paying off, right. So, has OU come through with their...
They have been paying on a regular basis, and as you know, they extended that by five years to now go towards the pumper truck. On the appropriation for the AFD grant, the auditor may indeed want to appropriate the full amount because oftentimes we have to show that as in terms of...
Thank you.
Yeah, I thought that's where you're going. To show that as an improvement to the city, so.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Okay.
That's it?
I believe that's all we have for Finance and Personnel.
Okay. We'll move on to Planning and Development Committee, and that's chaired by Council Member Paul.
Thank you. I want to start first with the announcement of our visioning, our first visioning extravaganza for a comprehensive plan. We would like everybody to come to give their initial ideas and hopes and dreams and their vision for the city of Athens. That will be on the 23rd of September at 6:30 in the community center. Part of the process is to have as many people come to give input and ideas to start the comprehensive plan for this next few months. And then there'll be other processes and meetings that come out of that visioning process to identify where it needs to go, who needs to be included as stakeholders in individual parts of the comprehensive plan. But the first initial part is to have everybody, all stakeholders, to come and give their two cents worth. So, be there or be square.
September 21st?
21st.
September 21st.
Okay. It's not my email. It's the big room. It will be the biggest room that night.
It's all three rooms, actually, so that there's enough room.
Will be televised?
Yes, it will be televised.
Thursday, the 21st, correct, at 6:30.
And the other thing is, is that this will just be the first step of public input through our comprehensive plan. We are planning multiple ways of getting input to have a transparent and inclusive process for a comprehensive plan, and we'll be rolling those out further as the months go on. So I will be updating everybody. We will have Planner Paul, Paul Logue, come and give a, a talk about it too. So Planner Paul. That was when there was too many Pauls. Planner Paul, Mayor Paul. Okay. We'd like to talk about the tenant occupant education form, the form that everybody loves to hate. One thing that Athens, that city council should do, that I don't think they do enough, is to go and look at the data, talk to people about what works and what doesn't work when they do ordinances. This tenant occupant education form was something that was put forward by a county, a city council many years ago, on the hope that it would act as an educational forum, an educational tool for tenants who move into Athens and don't necessarily understand the rules and regulations or when the garbage person comes and those sort of things. So the council at the time thought that the tenant occupant education forum was the way to go. Well, through twists and turns and court cases, it has not lived up to the hype of what council at the time wanted it to be. Right now, it, all it does is cause the code enforcement office to spend a lot of time shifting papers around. So I would like to repeal or amend, however the easiest way of going, the tenant occupation education form and find a different way through different medium of educating people who come into Athens as new citizens into Athens. We've talked briefly about having a required poster in houses that talk about all the different things such as nuisance party law, quiet hours, garbage and how you recycle, important information, contact numbers for emergencies, and those sort of things. And so that, we've talked about it beginning of the summer, and then we're talking about it again, and I'd like to move forward with it, so.
Member Paul? I have no problem with this kind of change, but I think before we don't use this anymore, we should have our changes in place, whatever those are.
Okay.
You know, I'm very familiar with our off-campus living office and the director there, and they do an educational effort through texting, through social media, through email, if they have their students' emails and whatnot. So a lot of this information is being shared. Initially, it was on the landlord's responsibility, the landowner's responsibility to share this information with their tenants. But just having this go away for good, and, and I clearly understand the paper issues and what is happening at the code office with this and the filing and whatnot. But I still believe this needs to happen some way that we need to make sure that this information comes across.
Right. I think one of the issues is that this is kind of, kind of based on calendars because many times, everybody has already probably filled out most of the forms for this year.
Correct.
And so whatever would be put forward would be rolled out with educational material with it, and I would not see, I would see next school year signing of tenant forms as being a time where it would probably not be. Does that make sense? I mean, I understand the rolling out...
By the time they're moving in, in July of 18, they've already signed probably by now for July of 18.
Councilmember Paul.
So what you're saying is the next round.
Coming.
That would work.
Paula?
You know, I just wanted to, to let council know, and I hope that you do already, is that Law Director has vetted this, has looked at it in all its different iterations. Getting back to what you had mentioned, Member Pappy, is that, you know, in looking at the form, you all have it in front of you as well, I believe. I mean, it's got the, you know, 10 bullets, they're not bullets, but 10, 10 informative statements on here that do speak to the bulk of the regulations that was called out of the former tenant landlord agreement. I also want to share, just briefly if I may, I, like it was yesterday, I remember coming onto council and going down to the code office and meeting with one of our former employees who passed not too long ago, Teresa Garen, and Teresa Garen looking at me, who worked out at the code office, saying, please do something about this form because I spend two weeks of my life every, you know, year doing nothing but shredding these because they sit in a folder. And so with now enacting something like this, that's hanging in a prominent location within every domicile that's a rental unit, we have even discussed this this morning during staff, to where the director of code enforcement, Rick Saroyes, we told him, you know, that among other things, this should be electronically sent to every landlord so that we don't in turn hear, well, we posted it, and then at some point it got ripped off the wall whenever. It's like, no, you've got that copy that you can constantly put up, and it's, it's going to be one of the elements that during rental unit inspections that is there, that's going to be checked on. It's like, is it prominently displayed? Yes or no? If it's not, it falls under the violations or the deficiencies of that rental unit, and corrective action is needed within seven days or whatever, whatever amount of time, but it's got to be done. And so by having electronic copy, they can easily now, okay, I got to print a new one, and now that new one will go up with, to replace the one that was removed, lost, used for playing darts, whatever.
I would also hope that with the placement in the house, that it's an educational process. I think now there's not as much back and forth with tenants and landlords. There needs to be some kind of way of landlords to educate tenants, and I don't think that the...
Websites are good.
Yeah.
City rules and regs on a website of a, of a, you know, housing group.
Right, but how, the idea that you have multiple people coming in, going at these rentals, that's something that's in your face with, on the walls. And at, you know, one point, it may be that we do a poster contest to do things with this, and the, the community people who go door to door with the students at the beginning of the year, they can say, here is your, you know, here is the information. And it's not just rules and regulations, it's how, how do you do recycling? How, you know, who do you call if you smell gas?
Civic responsibility issue.
And emergency response. Kim?
Thank you. I just briefly want to add that I'm glad that we're addressing this. I also feel that it's not necessary anymore, and also feel that it's a large waste of paper, and we can use more contemporary means of communicating ideas. I also don't think that it's necessarily our responsibility to educate, well, I shouldn't say educate, I don't think it's our responsibility to treat adults like babies. So on, on one level, I think this information is, is out there and capable of being attained, and I don't feel it's my responsibility or our responsibility to baby young adults. Thank you.
Okay. Paula?
To clarify, I wish I would have brought it. When I print mine out, it, it prints out as a poster size to be laminated and what have you. I love the idea we heard tonight to add emergency services numbers to this, but it really does touch on all of the topics. It would state the maximum occupancy. It will tell you who's the agent and how to contact them, and then again, all the other helpful things. So I guess, as opposed to like you're saying, throwing something completely out, this would just be a requirement in every rental unit. When we discussed at staff this morning, we kind of landed on actually instituting it January 1 with the annual rental permit renewal.
That would give us time to, and I don't, Lisa hasn't told me whether it's a repeal or just substituting language into, so that's something before next Monday when we see something.
I just wondered if you've thought about refrigerator magnets?
Hmm.
That's where I get most of my information.
You mean make that on a refrigerator magnet?
Yeah.
That's a big one.
It's a big magnet.
It's a big magnet. And then you could put the pizza numbers below it, you know.
That's where I go.
Okay.
Always go to the refrigerator first.
Maybe we just schlock it, yeah.
Just real quick, I know that we were kind of referencing the amount of shredding that took place to do this, but council, please keep in mind too, that that shredding is, you know, the person doing the shredding is also a salaried person who, that's, that's a cost savings right there for the amount of time that they have to sit there and destroy these documents that have been signed by people. So there's, there's also...
Not signed in some cases because of the, of the court cases and stuff, it's just never worked out, so.
Yeah, I'm sorry, just, just looking, looking through this document, and I don't know where everybody is right now with this technology, but did you consider using QR codes so that they can just hit it with their phone and go straight to the website?
And that could, that could be something that's put on the poster.
Refrigerator magnet, yeah.
Refrigerator, the giant refrigerator magnet, so.
Yeah, it is. Gate for pizza.
It may take us more than a week to include at least modifications, great. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Anybody else? Great, thank you. The next topic is our housing commission. A lot of time has been spent by a committee made up of citizens, people from Ohio University and city council, most notably Michelle Pappy, who worked hard and long on looking seriously at this housing situation in Athens, especially when it comes to affordable housing. Modern income housing for people who are not necessarily students, but may be coming in for a job, they may be coming in as a new professor, they may be coming in for other reasons, entrepreneurs, people who are moving out of their parents' house that want to live still in the, in the city. And we have come across this repeatedly, people have told us repeatedly, there is very few affordable housing options in Athens. So one of the ideas is to establish an affordability, a housing affordability commission. I work, and Michelle has been instrumental in this with going and doing the draft housing plan, and this is something that will help implement what has been put forward by the draft plan and also to carry the work forward. So I, do you have anything to say? This is kind of like a duel here.
No, this was one of the recommendations when we submitted the plan last December, and we met with the university. I co-chaired that with at the time Stephen Golding, who was vice president at the university. And we met, just as a reminder to everybody, we had banking people on the committee, we had real estate people, we had human resource people, we had all kinds of people on the committee. And for a year, we worked at and brought in people from the committee, whether, or from the community, real estate people, different people to talk to and ask questions of. And we toured the city, we looked at different sites, we talked about redevelopment. So this is, one of the recommendations is before you can move forward, it's good to have a board or a commission, however you want to call that, and that's what this ordinance is about.
Right.
Or future ordinance.
Right, and so basically, this follows the model of our various other commissions. You know, we have a planning commission which has more Ohio revised code requirements behind it, but we also have a sustainability commission, an arts, yeah, the municipal, the AMAC, Athens Municipal Arts Commission, the Disabilities Commission, and the Historic Preservation Commission. And this would follow the same rules and regulations behind it, creating the establishment of the commission, who it reports to, the types of reporting that it needs to, and the members appointed. This particular commission would be a city council commission, like other, like the sustainability, where the council will have, the members will be reported, suggested to the city council, and the city council will appoint those, which we have done repeatedly lately especially. I was thinking that the people who would be on such a commission would be a person designated by the president of Ohio University, somebody designated by the mayor, one person active in real estate and those sort of things, one person from the Metropolitan Housing Authority because they deal with lower-income housing, but they also deal a lot with fair housing and those sort of legal qualifications for fair housing. A person, one person or more representing the neighborhoods. Now, I think this would be an excellent time to reignite the neighborhood executive board, and they can put somebody forward who represents the neighborhoods, somebody from the finance sector, a local bank person, one person representing tenants, because they have definitely a say in this, and a general, what I call a general citizen advocate, interested people from, who don't fit necessarily in any of those squares that are, that's interested in working towards looking at affordable housing and developing information, recommendations that would be brought forward to the city council. So, does that sound fair? Arianna?
Thank you, Member Councilmember. I am excited to hear about this, and I commend the hard work that's already happened to kind of bring this issue forward. This is a wonderful opportunity to have positive impact on the community, addressing an actual, a real issue, so I am excited about that. Thank you.
Great. And I think maybe somebody, I didn't put it in, somebody from council should be on it too. So I will put that in my little draft, so. And personally, I'd like to, you know, say that I think this would be a perfect thing for Michelle, who will be leaving because she's retiring, that's so sad, to go out with.
From council.
Yeah, well, that's all, isn't there, is there anything else in the world? Oh my goodness. To, to be able to say, you know, this is the first step of what we need to do with affordable housing in Athens, so, the mayor?
I was just going to suggest to council that what was, one of the entities that was mentioned was someone from the Athens Metropolitan Housing Authority, and my suggestion to council would be to be more specific and have it be the executive director for the Metropolitan Housing Authority, who has vast experience in this area, and I think would be quite the asset in moving this forward when it comes to affordable housing.
Yep. Okay, thank you. So, any other questions? Chris?
I just wanted to thank council member Pappy. I know that she spent a lot of time with this, and I think it's, it's moved things forward. You know, I can remember years ago when the planner from Ohio State University talked to us about forming a community development corporation. And so with this kind of energy and talent, working together, collaborating with other organizations within the city, I think we'll be able to move forward in a positive way, so.
Thank you. Great, that's all I have for my planning.
Okay. Thank you. We'll move on to transportation committee, and that's chaired by council member Pappy.
Thank you. Richland Avenue pedestrian improvements. So I'm going to kick this over to administration. We've had to kind of give our, the little presentation to begin, but just for everybody for an update, as you know, we've been improving Richland Avenue for a long time, and we, you know, we, we have the bridge that was redone and the artwork that goes along with the bridge. Last year, the improvements of the sidewalks, the little island there by Bobcat Lane, the new lighting, and then we go all the way down through into the roundabout and then all the way down the street. So this is a piece where we've had a lot of safety issues there at the crossing as people are heading towards the roundabout. It would be coming down the hill there at Ohio University when people move across greens, and we've had a lot of scary situations that have occurred there. As council knows, quite a few months ago, ODOT awarded the city quite a lot of money to improve. I want to say it's nine, $800,000 or $900,000?
No, they, what they have awarded the city is $1,812,163.
I was shy by a million or more.
That's all right.
Yeah, so anyways, a considerable amount of money. They've decided as well that this is an important area. You know, we have young people traversing that area all the time, pedestrians, and then we also have cars that don't always know what to do or how to stop. So this is beginning the planning process for that. Their planning process has begun, but this is talking, moving it forward.
It is. If I may, this is $260,000 for engineering design on this project. As was mentioned, we're very fortunate, and I have to say, the city has been very fortunate, and I think that fortunateness isn't by happenstance, it's that we have a well-seasoned city engineer who's done a fine job, the director of engineering and public works, Andy Stone. This is a transportation alternative program. Again, we've been very successful in this category, as well as very successful under ODOT's small cities category with bringing in money. This is again for $1,812,195, I said 93, $95. This is a 95%. This, this grant is funding up to the 80% of the eligible costs on this particular project. Total, estimated total cost on the project is $2,357,824. So again, there's our 20% that's in that mix as we move forward. This is an area, just to mention, in my previous life, my office looked down on Richland Avenue, literally on, down onto the, I believe now infamous crosswalk to where I was in my office on two occasions, listening to screeching tires. One was extremely serious when there was a pedestrian vehicle conflict. The other was, was less serious, but all the same, there was another vehicle a couple years later, a few years later, where on that crosswalk, there was another pedestrian vehicle conflict. This is an area that's needed to be corrected for quite some time, and this grant would allow for that to where, in concept, the roadbed would be raised three, three and a half feet in elevation, and it would also go down five and a half or six feet down to create an open causeway that goes underneath Richland Avenue for, yeah, for lack of, I refuse to call it a tunnel. It will be a well-lit space that, and wide, that people can traverse through. Again, this has been identified, it's, you know, this crossing improvement project, again, would occur at grade sidewalk on Richland Avenue. Again, there's, there's some work to be done with Ohio University, but ODOT has identified Richland Avenue as a, identified as a priority corridor for improvements. And actually, this came under the 2010 bicycle and pedestrian plan to where this was identified, so not an ODOT identification, but with the city identification to know. This was also one of the stops, as council knows, during the street tour, to where we stopped and looked at what could occur in that area. So again, you know, we're talking about a $2.5 million project, but this is to start things going with the design. I don't know if this can be seen at all or not on camera, but again, it's a total cost for, to include engineering and the construction, 2.5 million. I know that's really hard to see, and I'm sure the camera can't zoom in on that, but council, you've likely seen this to where here is, again, let's see if our-
So while you're holding that up, Mayor, two important points that I would like to reiterate is the development of this plan as well with Ohio University and some of the monies that will likely be, we will be working together possibly on that. And the second thing is that we talk about plans that don't sit on a shelf, and I know there are people in this community, I've worked very, very long hours on the bike and pedestrian plan. I think one of our members was initially a part of that plan, Mr. Costas. So this was identified years ago and has continued to be problematic, and so I think when the city asks for grant money or approaches ODOT or small cities money or anything like that, again, that we have a plan on the shelf that identifies as well, they respect that the community has done their work and their effort to identify what the concerns are. So that helps us. So some people say, said to me, oh, so many committees and groups planning this and planning that. Tonight, we had a discussion about schools. All those things are important to the future and planning of a community. And here's an example of one that the state has decided is worthy of almost $2.5 million.
Sure. This is also, as member Pappy just mentioned a minute ago, I mean, this, this city, and this has been for a number of years, has worked very closely with Ohio University, and in particular on that Richland Avenue corridor with the Oxbow Bridge partnership, as well as between the bridges with the sidewalk improvements down in front of the convo, as well as West Green and the Baker Center side of Richland Avenue. So this is going to be one more project like that, where we're working closely together to make this come to fruition. Again, the other thing too about this area, this corridor, as everyone knows, because you've all driven up and down through the Richland Avenue area, especially during class change period, is there's a lot of congestion down there. So it's, it's, it's serving two purposes, safety for those who are using the underpass and certainly lessening the impact on those driving through. But again, we deem this as being an important and good project.
I just wanted to clarify that at this time, there has been no cost share assigned to Ohio University. It's more just the cooperation and working through, right-of-entry work agreements and what have you, so.
Member McGee?
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure that I understood something right. The city share would be about $500,000, is that right? 20% approximately?
No.
How much would the city share be?
Up to, well, they will pay up to 90, 80 to 95%.
No, I was, that was incorrect on my part. No, it was 80%.
Of course, thinking more like around 300, 350,000.
350,000.
350,000, and I just wondered, has there been any other kind of study other than digging this non-tunnel? Has there been any kind of study that would show any alternatives to this kind of project? Some people, some more conservative taxpayers may feel that this is a waste of money, even if the state of Ohio is giving us a generous part of it, and I just wondered, I've suggested in the past that having some sort of, you know, either police officer there directing traffic might be appropriate, but I just wondered, my question is simple, has there been any other study at all?
This is just based on information that Public Works Director Andy Stone has stated, but he has worked with the Ohio Department of Transportation on what they thought was the safest and most reasonable solution for this. You know, as opposed to bridges over, or they, and I'm not sure about a person there, but-
Or a light.
Or a light, but this was the best, this was the best option when they were working with Department of Transportation, so.
And the idea is to have landscape that kind of directs, you know, have the built environment directing the users of this path through there, and we could not ever reach ADA grade without going into a building on either side essentially at that area.
Yeah. Member Costas?
Yes, a couple, a couple things, and I'll try to ask them all at once. The, so the, the overall design of where the traffic flow, is that going to change? Because since we have Baker Center that has opened somewhat recently, as it's, I've seen a change in the flow of traffic. I see more people crossing a little bit higher, you know, trying to, you know, so they're, they're crossing over the island, they're using that island as a little stop, you know, a little teeny, teeny tiny spot, stop on their way across. Engineering firm, have you already decided on engineering firm? There was a third, third, oh, the third thing I had was actually a citizen grabbed me at the farmer's market months ago, asking me about this project, and he wanted to voice his concern of having the south side, one of the major arteries to the south side shut down again for construction so soon after the, the Richland Avenue improvements, for what it's worth.
Wow.
So that's, I just, I just need to put that out there, I just, you know, myself, if a, if a business relies on, on street traffic, sometimes the streets have to be fixed. And, you know, so that's, you know, I understand that some, some, some people, some, some citizens will come forward and, and voice their concerns, and so will businesses, but if you're utilizing a city, a city asset for your business and it needs to be fixed occasionally, you know, I, I don't know how many legs you have to stand on there. Thank you.
So Burgess and Niple?
Okay, thank you.
That's the firm, so let me start there.
Who designed the 682 roundabout.
Okay.
You know, so that's number one, you know, to address your comment about the closure, another closure. And I'm very empathetic, sympathetic to, to a lot of the closures, but with improving a lot of our city infrastructure, that's tends to be nature of the beast. But I am sympathetic to anyone who is, you know, becomes impacted by having to close things down if it wasn't, you know, Richland Avenue South, which was closed down for a long time, and I know there was impacts there to Stimson Avenue, to, to now Richland, which I think the most heavily impacted right along that corridor is going to be Ohio University. But that all said, sometimes that's, that's progress and in this case, safety, enhancing the safety in that corridor. And I'm blanking on what your third item was.
It was the cut.
Change of flow.
Right above Bobcat Lane and whether or not this can address that. We don't know that it is. I mean, we've talked about what we may feel we want to do there. You're saying that when they try to take refuge in the island further.
Yeah, I mean, so is the entrance and the exit, I mean, we have a, we have a clear defined path that's been there for decades. Is it, is it open for discussion about where the entrance and the exit of this tunnel's going to be on either side of the, or have we already kind of decided, have an idea of where, where the?
It's, a lot of it's based on utilities.
Okay.
There's, Member Costas, there's some really interesting infrastructure that's underneath there, and at that spot in particular, if you, if you notice, that's one of the lower points along that stretch at that point in time, plus there's a lot of telecom that's underground, there's other infrastructure that's underneath there as well, so it's having to, to, so we've been thinking about that, like, if you go, you know, any further south, what are you running into? If you go any further north, what are you running into? And during the initial phase, and this is where the city engineer has had to put a lot of, of work into what's underground, reaching out to OU, what, what do you have underground in this area too? And so this location, yes, is where they landed, as opposed to moving further north or further south.
I would just request that in the design element with the engineering firm, maybe they can look at, so the causeway is here, but I'm sure they will look at what the effect is there in pedestrian traffic to the south and what pedestrian traffic would be to the north is what you're talking about into that, what I call the Bobcat Island. But that, that could be part of, you know, their engineering design to discuss how to, I'm sure this is part of the engineering design, how do you funnel pedestrians to, and anybody who's been in a larger city where they have these, people are funneled to your causeway because they don't want that jumping over and crossing, and there's different ways of doing that in design elements. I didn't know if there was anyone here from the community that wanted to speak to this tonight?
Hi, I'm Rob Delak, just here as a citizen, and I had looked at this project from the initial design from back in January and wrote up a two and a half page response sort of to it a number of months ago and sent it to the council, and I don't think the whole council, but the Transportation Committee and the mayor, I believe, and the engineer. So a couple of things were just mentioned are sort of ideas that I had touched on in that. One of, one was what Councilmember McGee mentioned is sort of looking at alternatives. So there are other ways you could address safety issues here without building a tunnel. You could do something like raised crosswalk. You could put mini roundabouts at either end to slow traffic down. You could put, take out the median, there's a painted median now, narrow, you know, put the lanes closer together, and then increase the, the buffer with a buffered bike lane rather than just a regular bike lane, put an extra paint there to make the pedestrian crossing distance even shorter. So it's quite a few things you could do if you looked at alternatives. It would be a lot less expensive, and I'm not necessarily saying we should spend, we shouldn't spend this money, because if we have this money and we can do it right, I think that's a good idea. So then that brings up the second point, I guess, being careful there aren't unintended consequences here. Councilmember Pappy just mentioned the idea, and Councilmember Costas also mentioned that pedestrians crossing north and south of this could be a problem. If they aren't funneled in into the tunnel properly, they, right now, they're already going opposite ends of the, I mean, not crossing the crosswalk, especially crossing a Bobcat and at the end of the bridge, actually even, just going to the end of the bridge and then crossing right there. And if the bus stop is moved farther down, that means people getting off the bus are going to be at the end of the bridge and the ramp, and probably will try and cross the street right there rather than going down to the ramp and, or down to the tunnel across. So I think it has to be carefully designed, maybe a median barrier to help prevent pedestrians crossing at the wrong places. And if we, if we make this, build this tunnel with a ramp that allows the traffic to continue speeds that they want to travel in this area, which are faster than what it allows now with the pedestrians, then we're going to make it even riskier for pedestrians to cross at those other areas. So we could, unless we fix the problem for potential crossings north and south of the area, we could be making a much more dangerous situation for pedestrians. So again, I think this is a good idea. We should investigate this project, but look at options and also look at ways to mitigate the potential risks that could be, that could be a product of this project as well.
So I appreciate your comments. Anyone have any questions for Mr. Delak? And I believe those should be elements that should be added to the engineering plan to discuss that, some of these issues that were, were just brought up, so that the engineers could, could share that with us when, when that plan comes back. So we've thought about this from the crossover point of view and, you know, all those kinds of things. Should there be a median down the middle of the street so that people can't cross over? I know they do that in large cities a lot. Just different things like that. So those questions could be answered. So if this does move forward and the city ends up paying their share, whatever that would be, that citizenry council could be satisfied with the design elements. Because I do agree that I think people will try faster because they don't have to watch as much. And so how do you manage that? How do you, how do you deal with that? How do you make sure that people aren't crossing just, my word, willy-nilly, wherever you feel like you want to cross? So those are all issues that I think hopefully could be included in the design and discussion as it moves forward.
Just going to make two other small points.
Sure.
One is, it might make sense to look at the tunnel crossings at the other tunnel on 682, compare that to the road crossings, at grade crossings, and see what's going on there. See, people aren't being funneled to the tunnel, but see what the choices that are being made. Might make sense to give you an idea of what's going to happen if we put a tunnel in at this location. The other thing is, is that I didn't even address this in my paper, but how this tunnel impacts pedestrian traffic, or sorry, bicycle traffic is something that I don't think was really addressed. And it's, I thought about it after I wrote it even, some, having crossed there a number of times myself and including with a whole gaggle of kids and families on an Athens Bicycle Club ride, we crossed there, and I was thinking about what it's going to be like when you go through the tunnel and then you have an S-curve ramp to go up to get out of the other side as the initial design. Maybe the final design won't look like that, but thinking about how bicycles can navigate this is important as well, because bicycles will, bicyclists will want to cross here, and we need to continue to allow them to be able to do so safely.
Thank you.
Oh, Mayor Patterson. I just want to, in the design, I just want to address the S-turn, the Serpentine, that's, that's an ADA element to that design, not so much a bicycle design or anything else with the, what would lead down to that tunnel. But I just want to remind council that, you know, we have been awarded the money, you know, under this application, so it's there for this project unto itself.
And I would just say we can direct the consultants, we're paying them, the engineer, design people, you know, what some of the concerns are in the community as well. Our consultants generally are pretty good about listening to, you know, design firm, what, what the concerns are. Okay. Next on the agenda is the JPAC barbecue street closer, closure, and Member Smedley is going to present that this evening. Thank you.
We will be asking to close a couple of streets, Park Place between University Terrace and Court, and a portion of Court Street between West Mulberry and President Street. The date would be on Tuesday, September 26th, with the rain date on the very next day, for an event called Barbecue on the Bricks. This is an event sponsored by the Joint Police Advisory Council, or JPAC. So the location, for those who may not know the names off the top of your head, it's essentially the, right in front of the fourth floor of Baker Center. And just for a little background, JPAC was formed in 2001, I believe.
2011.
2011, apologies. And it is a joint entity with the university and the city of Athens, and the intent of the group is to develop and maintain productive relationships between the community and the law enforcement bodies that protect them. And I was, I was recently appointed to serve on the commission, and I appreciate that appointment, it's been a great experience. We've had our one meeting so far this year, and so this event is sort of their kickoff event where they can just create that dialogue with students primarily, but it's also open to the public. Food will be free, and yeah, so that's what that event's all about, so.
What's the date?
It is September 26th, it's a Tuesday. Can you help me with the time? I believe it's 5 to 7?
5:00 PM to, well, in terms of some of the closures, 5:30 to 9:00 PM, I believe the event is, to 9:00 PM, I think the, the event itself is 5 to 7. So 5:00, 5:00 PM to 9:00 PM total, but the event is, as I understand, at 5 to 7.
I think you're, I think that's correct.
Well, actually, I have to move that time up in order to close the street, and we did have some discussion at staff this morning that we may close Mulberry just for safety purposes so that we have that hole, everybody else traveling can go around at President's.
Would you like, would the administration like to add anything else to that?
Just that this is, I believe, the third or fourth year running that we've had the JPAC barbecue, it's been going on for a while. We kind of took this on when I was serving as chair of JPAC, when I was on city council, as a way, it shortly happened, it happened shortly after the incident in Ferguson, Missouri, to where we were sitting there trying to figure out a way in which we can really open up the dialogue under the community policing model of doing things. And it was, the first year was, I think I'd be safe to say wildly successful. There was a large turnout that came to that, and it's truly a partnership between Ohio University and the city of Athens, and both of our police departments. As a matter of fact, that first year, OU PD officers were actually serving the food. I don't know if they're going to be serving again this year or not, but regardless, I think it's more important that everyone being able to sit down at the tables together, which we set up multiple tables in this area, and encourage everyone to sit down and get to understand each other, know a police officer by name. And that's one of the beauties that has been JPAC, Joint Police Advisory Council. Members Smedley, it started, it was the brainchild of both the police chiefs, Chief Powers and Chief Pyle, and so the idea of JPAC started in 2011, the inaugural meeting was in, early in 2012, but and then, like I said, JPAC starting right after Ferguson, Missouri, after that incident took place. We, the city's contribution to this will be $6,000, or $3,000. Ohio University's police department will also being, bringing forward $3,000, and then they're, they're lobbying for student organizations to come up with the remaining $3,000. Again, the city has invested in this process, $3,000, give or take, over the course of the past two or three or four JPAC barbecues. I'm completely blanking on when we actually, what, what the true date was of when we started the JPAC barbecue. But I believe it's not just OU Police Department and Athens Police Department, it'll also be, the Sheriff's Department will be there as well, as they have been in the past, as well as State Highway Patrol, I believe, will be involved. So again, it's just one of these events that we really hope to bring students and the community. You know, Ameri-Tai faculty Francine Childs typically will show up to this event and engage with the students, one of our last city residents down where she lives. And Dwayne Nellis, President Nellis will be there as well this year, as well as several other university administrators is, and myself, so, and hopefully, city council will be there.
Got a couple of questions here, yes.
Member McGee.
It's not really a question, it's just a comment. I just think this is one of the best things that the police departments for both Ohio University and the city of Athens do, and I commend JPAC for this kind of activity. I'm not sure whether you recall, but years before that, we used to have neighborhood association barbecues where, I know there was a lot of concern about wild parties on the north side, I believe it was, and we used to have our neighborhood barbecues, and the citizens, the townies would get together with the students and have a hamburger or a hot dog, and actually, it was a great way to learn some things about each other. So again, I commend the activity.
I'm glad you brought that up, Member McGee. There's, yeah, a lot of the neighborhood associations, you know, some still do the ice cream social or some other things to, to engage, and I really appreciate your kind words on this event. This is a good event. It is, so.
Member Reisner.
I just wondered, do we ever take attendance figures or any estimates?
That first year, we tried.
It was a lot of people.
And there was a lot of people. And we were just, we were, at the, at the moment, I think this is still the case, we're just, we're so in the moment that to have someone sit there and try to do a head count, and there's been estimates, you know, on the order of thousands, possibly, plural, they're well attended.
Do you have enough food?
Until we run out. That's what we're committing to.
Until you run out.
This is something that, since you now know, is September 26th, we're totally going to have to suspend this in order to get this through in, in terms of the closure. And as Service Safety Director alluded to, we are looking to add Mulberry to close this down, because last year, we did have some police elements, most notably the mounted that was in the intersection right there where Park Place and South Court Street begins, but we've, and we feel that just from a safety standpoint, to close down Mulligan and then direct traffic around to President and come up that way as opposed to.
Mulberry.
What did I say?
Mulligan.
No, we're not going up Mulligan, Jeff, to your house.
Just wondering.
Although you'd probably like that barbecue, wouldn't you?
Member Smedley, do you have anything else?
To Mulberry. Thank you for correcting me.
No, I, no. We're good?
Okay.
Okay. We're complete. Thank you.
We'll move on to City and Safety Services Committee with Councilmember Butler chairing.
Thank you, President Reisner. We just have three items this evening, first being the waste, I'm sorry, the water treatment plant's resolution of tentative award, followed by the water treatment plant improvements project, and third, the Arts West renovations rebid. We'll also likely ask for some guidance from the city administration on the water treatment plant, and we talked briefly about some of it during Councilmember Reisner's committee. I did receive some communications from one of our engineers, Ms. Adine, who offers some information about a deadline, which, which means that this is fast approaching, so we have a September 25th deadline to proceed. What else might?
Maybe this is a resolution for tentative award on this project, which we're looking at 1.5 million.
It's late.
Oh.
5.19, I'm sorry.
Did I say 1.5? It's a long night.
It has been a long night.
5.1 million. Wouldn't that be nice if it was 1.5 million? It would be great. It's not. It is $5.1 million, total project is 5.3 as we move forward, but like I said, this is a resolution for tentative award on this project.
And then?
The other is, yeah, authorization for construction and engineering on the waste, or the water treatment plant. or the water treatment plant.
As we've talked about this in the past, we've, we took this with the wastewater treatment plant, because the water supply revolving loan fund, in that case, I think it's the other, the loan fund that's still wastewater, there's a rapid turnaround in that our EPA representative has requested that our OWDA have both of these pieces of legislation passed at the same time, which would be Monday.
So we'll have to suspend.
Thank you. Yeah, and this empowers the city Service Safety Director to begin that process of contracts. So, I need to proceed.
Yes, Councilman Reisner. I just wondered, how soon do you get started on this? Are we, what, the construction season's getting close to closed, so are we looking at next year?
No, we are not. It's because a lot of these improvements are interior to the plant, they feel that they can accomplish that. We've got really good bids.
That's great.
We're hopeful.
That's wonderful.
We should have--
But back to your question, and as Service Safety Director mentioned, a lot of these are interior design, or design elements that are going forward on this project, as well as, as correction to three different currents that flow into that building--
Right, right.
--to align those towards one.
Thank you. Any other updates, I'm sorry, questions from councilmembers? And then regarding Arts West renovations, my understanding is that the bids came in beyond, or they were overbid, or--
Came in high.
Too high, thank you. And, and if you recall, there's a number of renovations to Arts West, some of which include disability-friendly access to bathrooms, improvements to the bathrooms--
Base--
--flooring, kitchen space. I think that's the hot points, is that correct?
Right. I mean, the estimated cost for this project for Arts West is $115,000, and when the bids came in, it exceeded $200,000 on the bid. So, and as council, you're probably familiar that, you know, you've got that 10% allowance above that estimated cost, and this far exceeded that, so we'll go back out.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? No, public?
Okay.
Thank you. That concludes committee.
And that concludes our meeting tonight. We'll adjourn at 8:52 PM, and we'll see you all next Monday night. Thank you very much.